Welcome to the 2013 Candidates Forum. This forum is sponsored by the Edmonds Chamber of Commerce and the Economic Development Committee of the Chamber. My name is Chris Kues. I'm the moderator for this evening's forum. Tonight's forum will feature candidates running for the Edmonds School District Board of Directors and also candidates running for the City of Edmonds City Council. Before we start this evening, we will have a representative from the Port Commission, not a representative but a candidate, running for Port Commission. There are three current commissioners running for reelection. Two of them will not be able to be here tonight, but the third one, Commissioner Ferris, will be allowed a three-minute opening statement this evening before we start the forum. The questions for the candidates this evening has been formulated by a task group made up of members from the Economic Development Committee and the Advocacy Committee of the Chamber. I want to ensure everyone here and everyone watching this broadcast this evening that no one knows the questions outside of this very small task group. The format for this evening's forum will be, the candidates will be given two minutes each for an opening statement, and then there will be a question and answer format after that. And then at the end of the time for the school board candidates and the city council candidates, they will have time for a closing statement of one minute. The forum is being televised live right now on Channel 21 and Channel 39 and will be rebroadcast at 4:00 PM each day up to Election Day. The forum will also be broadcast on myedmondsnews.com starting either tomorrow night or first thing Wednesday morning, and that will be available at your convenience at any time up to Election Day. The timekeeper this evening is Jan Cavades. Jan is a member of the Economic Development Committee and of the Chamber, and she is our timer. Jan, would you show the audience the time? And this is time remaining when they ask a question. So I believe she has 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and one minute. Is that correct? Yes. Okay. All right.
Now I stand up.
Okay. Thank you, Jan. Jan does provide a very valuable service, and we're happy to have her back this year. Okay. Commissioner Ferris, you have three minutes for your statement as a candidate running for Port Commissioner.
Thank you, Chris. It's a little difficult, I hope the sound works. It's a little difficult because I'm supposed to talk to the TV camera, except we've got a whole bunch of people out here who made the effort to come down here, so thanks, folks. Now I'm going to talk to them. I'm Bruce Ferris, and I'm a candidate for Port Commissioner at the Port of Edmonds this year. The first and certainly appropriate thing to do, I think, this evening is to thank Chris and the Chamber for putting this on, because this is a lot of work. This doesn't just happen. There's months of work that go into the preparation for this forum, and they do a great job. It's a unique opportunity for you to see and compare the various candidates. Some of my comments may be pertinent only to those of you who reside in the Port District, in the Edmonds Port District, which encompasses part of Edmonds and all of the town of Woodway, and some more to that later. I'm pleased to report that the Port of Edmonds is financially healthy. It's a good place to start. Over the past 15 years, we've led the Puget Sound Marina industry in implementing a cost model which is aimed towards making the marina financially self-funding, and that's important. And that's been a lot of work, and we've suffered a few slings and arrows as a result. However, the first priority for me in a new term as your Port Commissioner is to continue our efforts to ensure that the Port of Edmonds is planning adequately for the strategic long-term financial future, and that's important. When the Port Marina was originally built, it was constructed with public funds. That's your money. The Port Commission is working to ensure that when the marina needs to be rebuilt, perhaps in 19, in 2030 or 2040, financial resources will be available at that time without having to ask the port residents to directly fund any capital expenses required at that time. And this is not an easy puzzle to sort out, but it's a priority. It's probably the most important priority we have. My second goal is to plan a new future for Harbor Square in light of the city council's formal vote to no longer consider the present port master plan for that publicly-owned area. The Port respects the Edmonds City Council's authority to make land use decisions regarding Harbor Square's future, and therefore we must develop a different vision for Harbor Square's future. The new vision must be one that is still in the best interests of the residents of the Port District. It continues to be in harmony with the City of Edmonds Comprehensive Plan and is consistent with the mission of ports in the State of Washington. And I certainly invite port residents to help us make that vision the one that best serves our community. And now back to kind of what I was talking about before, back to the issue of what really is the Port District. Many of you, I'm sure, understand what the Port of Edmonds is, but I'm equally sure that many in our community do not. The Port of Edmonds is not part of the City of Edmonds and does not include all of the City of Edmonds within its boundaries. The Port District boundaries do include the westernmost part of Edmonds and all of the town of Woodway. The Port of Edmonds Charter also differs from that of the City of Edmonds. Ports in Washington are local or regional governments charged in general with transportation, infrastructure, and economic development job creation. That's what ports do under the Charter in the State of Washington. However, ports are local and regional governments, and they respond to the needs and specific environment of their specific communities. In the case of the Port of Edmonds, that means focusing on three activities. First, development and management of the Edmonds Marina, which I'm very proud to mention was selected as the best marina in the United States about four or five years ago, and Chris, as a matter of fact, was the director at that time, and a lot of the thanks go to him. Second, the Port places a very high priority on public amenities, the waterfront walkway, the sling launch, the public plaza on the west side of Anthony's where a, which provides a venue for summer jazz on the waterfront and artists in action, and many other public amenities that exist down at your port. And third, the Port is charged in Edmonds with the economic well-being of the Port District residents in the region. That's important. It is part of our job to focus on economic growth and a stable economic future for Edmonds. You're trying to tell me something. I've been a member of the Port Commissions in 1999 and a longtime resident. I would appreciate your support in the upcoming election and invite you to come down to your port, take advantage of what we have to offer, and if you're so inclined, get involved in our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. If we could have now the school board candidates come up to the front and sit at the chair behind their name tag. I would like to remind, while they're coming up, remind the audience that we would appreciate being respectful to the candidates, remembering that you may not all agree with what they say, but that's okay. That's what the political process is for. We have, from District Number Two, Anne McMurray is here. Am I understanding your opponent dropped out of the race? Is that correct?
Actually, I am running unopposed.
Okay. All right. And then District Number Four, Susan Phillips is the incumbent. And your opponent was not able to make it tonight, so you two have the main focus for the questions tonight. We'll start with Anne, and you have two minutes for your opening comments. And Janet just reminded me that you do need to speak fairly closely into the mic for this to pick up. So, two minutes for opening comments. As part of your comments, would you tell us about your qualifications to be a board member and why you are seeking this position? Ms. McMurray.
Sure. My name's Anne McMurray. I live in Briar. Director District Two encompasses Mount Lake Terrace and Briar. It is the, one of five director districts on the school board. And the reason that I'm running is that I believe that our children represent the hope of the future, and few things support the hope we have for our children more than a quality education. As the current president of the Edmonds School Board, I'm honored to represent this community and contribute to the strength of public education. For almost 25 years now, I've worked as a room mom, a parent group president, a booster president, and for 15 years as a member of the district's citizen planning committee. I've been on the school board since 2005, and I'm proud of the academic achievements of our students, the professionalism of our teachers, the dedication of our support staff, and the exceptional financial support of this community. Going forward, my goals are to maintain the financial strength and integrity of the district as well as continue to emphasize improvements that directly affect the student in the classroom and provide opportunity for strategic professional development with staff. All of these together will help our students remain in school and remain committed to their educational goals as their diplomas become a springboard to a productive, engaged adulthood. I ask you to join my fellow board members who all support my continuation on the board. You're here, your vote is important, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Anne. Ms. McMurray? No. Ms. Phillips?
Phillips.
Phillips.
Very good.
I keep wanting to see an opponent between the two of you, and there's no opponent up there. Go ahead. You have two minutes for your opening statement. Same question. Qualifications to be a school board director and why are you seeking the position?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Susan Phillips. I'm a candidate for the school board, Director District Number Four, and I'd like to thank the Edmonds Chamber of Commerce for organizing the event this evening. It's really nice to see everybody here and have a little chance to meet you, so thank you. I am currently the vice president of the school board, and I am running for reelection. My two children have attended schools at Edmonds School District, and I am committed to giving back to the community that provided a quality education for my children. As Anne stated, I too have been very involved in Edmonds School District for many, many years. I've also been involved with parent clubs, PTAs. I've been on those field trips. I've worked in the classrooms, and I've also been a lunch buddy with elementary students for many years, which is really a great, fun volunteering position if you're interested. I volunteer for Citizens for Schools, which organize efforts to pass levies and bonds, which provides funding for our schools and our students. And volunteering helps to keep me connected with the community and enables me to better make decisions in the interest of all students. I work to improve our school system, support teachers and staff, and strengthen relationships between school, community, and home. I work collaboratively with fellow board members to improve learning for all students and provide teachers the support needed to maximize their students' success. I continue to work with state legislators on educational priorities, which includes school funding. I consider educational research, proven practices, and community input when making decisions. I bring a well-rounded and open perspective. I'm committed to Edmonds School District, and I ask for your vote. I am fortunate to live in such an involved and caring community, and with your support, I will continue my efforts through the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. First question will go to Ms. Phillips, and both of you will be answering the same question. We'll take the order of who goes first throughout the question and answer period here. First question to Ms. Phillips. The Edmonds School District high school on-time graduation rate is in the lower quartile of all the school districts in the state. This is per the Everett Herald article dated July 14th. What, in your opinion, is the cause of this statistic and how will you address this as a school board member?
And how much time do I have to answer that question?
One minute.
All right. Thank you for that question. That's a good, very good question, and probably on the minds of many people. Maybe I can tag team with Director Murray, but the statistics that were just discussed, the graduation rate, it involves, of course, all of the students that are in our general high schools as well as students who go to our alternative high schools, Greiber Lake, as well as many other programs that we have for students to graduate in from high school. So, we, that includes people who are going through, getting their diploma by taking classes online and also through the Edcap program at the community college. And many of those students are not from our, are not from our district. They're actually students that are coming outside of our district to take benefit of that service. So, that's one reason why the graduation rate is lower than other districts is because we are serving many more students.
Ms. McMurray.
Well, if you look at the graduation rates for the comprehensive high schools, you'll see that the rates are much higher in the low, in the upper eighties and low nineties. And part of it, when we saw this coming out from the Herald, one thing we realized and we asked about, there are 13 programs in the Edmonds School District that the state looks at for and counts and rolls into our on-time graduation rate. We, in the Edmonds School District, go above and beyond trying to provide kids with opportunities to get that diploma in ways that are very creative, and sometimes we have difficulty with the state recognizing what those are and how those are counted in. We're currently doing a review of all those programs and looking at, are they effective? Do we need to keep doing them? And so, we saw those statistics as well, and we're doing a detailed analysis.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Phillips, next question. What is, this is an easy one. What is your position regarding a possible requirement that every student wear a uniform?
Well, this is an interesting question because this came up to the school board not too long ago because of some families in some of our schools were actually asking that we, that they are students could wear uniforms, especially for students, the families, many families with students that are coming from low income struggle with trying to keep their kids clothed for school. There's a lot of competition as you get, as you're in school of to what you're wearing and how you look. So, families felt that it might be more economical for them and also beneficial if they, if their students could wear uniforms. We've discussed the matter and thought that if schools, if communities within schools wanted to do that, we certainly wanted to be able to support them.
Thank you. Ms. McMurray, same question.
Well, it was funny. We've been at, I don't know how many board meetings, and we talk about school uniforms, and the first time we've got news cameras all over the place because this issue generates a lot of, a lot of opposing thoughts. For me, when we looked at the issue, I have, I have no objection to uniforms. It depends on how they're done, who institutes them, and how it works. So, what we're looking at potentially doing is allowing individual school communities to make a decision about uniforms, if it matches what they need, and then vetting those decisions at the board level. So, at this point, we haven't done a formal vote yet, but we are interested in continuing to see if this might be something that would be beneficial to individual school populations.
Okay. Thank you. Next question. Ms. McMurray, we'll start with you on this next question. What is your position on allowing Sound Transit to purchase school district property for storing rail cars?
Well, we have had a piece of property that's over off of 52nd in Mount Lake Terrace that the district has planned for quite a while to combine just all kinds of district services into one central location. And coincidentally, just because of where that property is located, it has come to the notice of Sound Transit because of its proximity to I-5 and just where it's located. However, we've got some very specific plans for that property, and while I appreciate that Sound Transit may want the property, at this point, I support the district fully going ahead with our plans for the benefit of the district.
Okay. Ms. Phillips, same question.
I agree also. I think it's important that we be able to follow through with our plans and to put the transportation, all the buses would be located there as well as the district offices. So, certainly, it might be something that Sound Transit is looking at and considering, but I know as a district, we're moving forward with our plans, hoping to be able to move those facilities there as soon as we can. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Phillips, we'll start with you on the next question. Do you support the charter school program? Why or why not?
I'm, I'm, I would say that for charter schools, I think that there's a couple of things that concern me about charter schools. And one of them is that I'm not, I'm not convinced that students get a well-rounded education at charter schools. There might be perhaps a focus on the arts or a focus on particular areas at charter schools, but in speaking with teachers who are working in other states where there are charter schools and they have students coming back into their public schools, they have commented to me that they don't really feel that the education experience is very well-rounded for those students. And secondly, I have concerns about charter schools as far as who gets to go to charter schools. If they are available for all students, which is what public schools are, they are available for all students.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. McMurray, the next question will be for you to start out with. Question is, how should the STEM program, and this is science, technology, engineering, and math, be implemented strategically and with what resources?
Right now, the, the school district has certainly allocated funding that we can for STEM programs, but we also are very fortunate that we have partnerships with organizations that, that raise private money that are, that are assisting with our STEM development. So, we should continue as a district, as we're able and as resources work back into the system, certainly to look at and prioritize STEM in the classrooms, middle school, high school, and then continue to work with philanthropic partners to bring in additional funds that are specifically targeted for STEM.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips, same question.
And, and, sorry, there was two parts to the question.
Yes. We're talking about the STEM program.
Yes.
Okay. How should it be implemented strategically and with what resources?
Very good. Thank you. So, as a STEM program, we have classes in our middle schools as well as in our high schools that focus on science, technology, engineering, and math. We have designated one of our high schools to have a kind of a magnet school for STEM, and it just started two years ago, and we had great enrollment, a lot of interest in the STEM program at Mount Lake Terrace High School. And funding, as, as Dr. Anne McMurray mentioned, as far as the district doing what we can to support certainly STEM, and we've also been able to work with some of the corporations who've been able to donate money to help us with STEM. We had a STEM festival or a STEM, like a science fair this past year. I've been working with the community college so that we've had the Expanding Your Horizons Conference for high school girls so that they can learn more about careers in the STEM fields, and those have been done through collaboration with the college and with donations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we'll stay with you, Ms. Phillips. What is your position on mandatory state testing?
Just in a minute, huh? Okay. I, I think about education and, and testing as looking at the child, whole child. So, I think that state testing is important, and I, but I also think that it's important to look at other aspects of the education that students are getting. It's, I kind of compare it to how colleges are now, many colleges, when they are looking to accept students, they're looking not only at their SAT and ACT scores, but they're also looking at a more holistic view of the, of the student. What else have they done in their lives before they decide to accept them? So, I take that same approach with state testing. It's, it's important, certainly, but it's just part of the piece of the work for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McMurray, same question.
Could you repeat the question for me?
Question is, what is your position on mandatory state testing?
My position is I understand that the state wants some sort of a vehicle to measure progress for students, and I get that. But I'm very much like Director Phillips. It's only one set of tools to figure out how a child or how a student is doing. I mean, how many of us ourselves or have family members that simply did not do well on those mandatory tests? They really didn't adequately portray our understanding or, or knowledge of a particular subject for a variety of reasons. So, I understand that, that we need to have that there, but certainly advocate for classroom-based assessments, teachers, principals, doing other types of testing and evaluation that really get at the heart of how a student is doing.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. McMurray, we'll stay with you on the next question. And the question is, is there a greater role for volunteers in the school district? And if yes, what would that role be? And what programs currently in effect would not allow this to happen?
The, there is always a role for volunteers in the schools, but again, as, as your question kind of leads to, sometimes there are some barriers for people getting in and volunteering, and some of those barriers have to do with the contracts we have with different bargaining groups in, in our district. So, we walk a fine line between really wanting and asking for people to come in and work while not violating the agreements that we have in place. But I think over the years, we've shown an ability to be able to work people in to acceptable places, and if you have time, come on down.
Okay. Ms. Phillips, same question. Would you like it repeated?
I think I'm, I think I'm good. Thank you. I just would like to say thank you to everybody that does volunteer in our schools, and, you know, I don't want to sound, I don't want to repeat something that you've heard a lot, but times have been tough, and the volunteers in our communities have just stepped up and have been just so tremendous and helped us an incredible amount. Parent groups who've raised tremendous amount of monies, people who have come to help along with the guidelines to be able to help and clean up schools and, and work, work in the facilities to make sure that they look nice so when the students come back. Volunteers in the classrooms, people who are going on the field trips. It's just, it's been very heartwarming, and as I mentioned in my opening statement, I am very honored to live in such a caring community, and, and I'm, as a school board member, I'm just so very grateful to the volunteers that come and help.
Thank you. Ms. McMurray, the next question is for you to start out with. This is in regards to the SRO program. The School Resource Officer Program has been downsized to one or two mobile units between the schools. Should more resources be allocated to this program so that more officers are allocated to the schools, and if so, from where would the funding come?
As we have had difficulties and challenges with our budget, so have local police departments who in the past have partnered with us in, in the SRO program. So, like we have on a variety of different things, we've had to be creative about how to, how to create a, a police presence on especially our, our high school campuses while without really a lot of money. And so, certainly one thing that we would look at is in increasing our resources And so, certainly one thing that we would look at is in increasing our resources when they come in to that program. But the other thing we did this year was ask the principals at the high schools to tell us, how is that program working? Is it beneficial? Could we do something different? Could it look a little differently and still have the benefit? And that's what we've done this year because of, because of losing funding on the SRO.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips, same question. Would you like it repeated?
No, that's fine, thank you. We do have a student resource officer at one of our high schools, which is Linwood High, because it's a bit of a distance away from the closest police station and the fire station. So, we've kept a, we've, throughout the years, we've kept a police officer there at Linwood High. What we've done this year is we're working with the different communities and we've come up, it started in Mount Lake Terrace and they suggested that we have what's not a student resource officer, we've changed the name to a student liaison officer. And this officer might not be at the high school as much as it has happened with the student resource officer, but it's an, it's an officer that's designated to stop by the high school at least once a day, check in, make sure things are going okay. It's a resource for the administration at the high school and it's a way to keep the costs down so that we're not having an officer on campus all day.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McMurray, the, the next question is for you. And we're talking about ground maintenance at the schools. There's been some elimination of ground maintenance at the schools, which has allowed overgrown vegetation to impact school grounds. Concern might be that this may lead to fire safety image concerns. Should this concern be addressed? Why or why not? If yes, how should it be addressed?
In this last budget cycle that we've gone through, we've, we have actually, well, let me back up. Several years ago, when we were scrambling to fund classrooms, we basically cut four positions out of, out of our grounds and maintenance. And they bravely stepped up the plate and did what they could, but frankly, it meant that there was, there was a lot of weeds and, and just the grounds were not as, kept up as well as they had in the past. However, this last budget cycle, we've added two back in because we recognized that difficulty. And so, as resources are starting to come back to us as a system, we are beginning to put those resources back into several areas and one of them that has prominence besides the classroom has been the grounds.
Ms. Phillips, same question.
Well, I would just kind of say ditto, but we, we did really have to focus our attention and our funds on the classroom and the students when we were facing the budgets that we were dealing with. We, we had $40 million cut out of our budgets over the last six years. So, you can imagine what that meant and, and it's, we really had to, as a, as a system, stay focused on the students and that meant that some of our grounds were not kept up as nicely as they had been in the past. But again, I would say that for, at least in some schools, the volunteers came around and were able to, to help us to keep some of the grounds looking a little bit nicer than if they, if they had not helped, so.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Phillips, I'll stay with you on the next question. What is the role of the school board director regarding school district policy and making policy implementation?
Well, the school board's responsibility is to, is to make the policies and it is the administration's responsibility then to implement those policies.
Ms. McMurray, anything to add to that?
No, that's, that was a fairly succinct response. I like it.
Okay, let's go on to the next question. Ms. McMurray, we'll start with you on this one. To continue to equalize the student population ratio among the schools, should any school boundaries be adjusted? Why or why not?
You know, school boundaries, we, we deal with this, the Citizen Planning Committee deals with this on an ongoing yearly basis. We're constantly reviewing them and right now, because we have so many of our kids in the north part of our district and so many of our buildings in the south part of the district, we have got boundaries where literally people are right up to the doorstep of schools and they don't go to that school. So, we are in the process of constantly evaluating the boundaries and trying to determine how to take a mobile population of students and make them fit with a fixed set of, of, of sites. And it's something we, we wrestle with. We have our staff, parents, teachers, looking at on a, on a constant basis. It's, it's always, it is always in, in flux.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips, same question.
Well, I would just add to what Director McMurray mentioned is that last year, we took a look at the boundaries in the northern part of our district and instead of actually physically moving the boundaries, but well, I have to say that some of our schools were just chock-a-blocks full. They're just, they're, there are so many kids going to those schools and classrooms are filled, students are, are, sometimes classes are being held in the gyms because there's so many students. So, instead of changing the boundaries, which we knew is a, is a difficult thing to do, we, we decided that families that would be coming, moving into that area and their kindergartners would be starting in particular schools, especially those schools that are overcrowded, that we would then be having them go to a different school. So, it didn't impact families that were currently at those schools, but it does impact new families with new kindergartners that are coming in and that has helped somewhat, not as much as we hoped, but it has certainly helped.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips, you, you start with the next question. The school board consists of five board members. How do you collaboratively work with other members of the board who may not agree with your position?
Well, we, we get a tremendous amount of information about the issues that are coming to us and we have a lot of time to discuss that at board meetings. And if, if we don't have enough time during board meetings, then we will request a study session so that we have, again, more time to, to learn about the information that's being presented, to ask our questions. I would say as a board, we work fairly collaboratively and we understand that while maybe when it comes to make the, making the final vote, not everyone might agree, but we all try to, to see it as being a decision made for the whole.
Thank you. Ms. McMurray?
That's basically how we work is, is to, I, I've been on the board since 2005 and over those years, I've only seen a couple of actual votes that, that got to a vote where we were split on, on a decision because the, the analysis and the work actually happens prior to the final motion. And, and once that, that motion is put forward, it's already, it's already been, been worked to include the, the feelings and the positions of all five of us. So, it can look like it's fairly boring because we all pretty much agree with each other, but we've done the work beforehand so that we have that agreement at the end.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McMurray, we'll stay with you on the next question. What is your position regarding school district control versus individual school control over the curriculum?
You know, we, it, the school, kind of the school-based control was called site management back when I started on the Citizen Planning Committee in 1990. And back then, the administrations pretty much had carte blanche over curriculum and spending money and all of that. And, and it had some very positive effects, but it had some really negative effects. And one of the main negatives was curriculum alignment. You had second graders in different schools across the district being taught different things at, at different rates. And so, I am, having watched it in practice, I am much more comfortable with a more district-led overview of many of the aspects of a school, including curriculum in the, in the classroom.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips, same question.
I would just add to that, that we have a lot of students that move around in our district. Not only do they move around within our district, but they move around within other districts in our state and they go state to state. So, it's important that students, if we have a student that's moving from one school to another, it's important that there is a common curriculum that they have. And we also, as you may have already heard, we have the Common Core coming at us next year. And that's a, a curriculum that will be common within 40-odd states in our country, again to serve those students who are moving around so that we have that, that common understanding. So, in that way, it's important that we as a district have some common curriculum among our schools.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips, we'll stay with you on the, on the next question. This is in regards to levies, tax levies. What is your philosophy on levy renewal and implementing new tax levies for the school district?
Well, this, that's a really great question because in February, we have a renewal of our levy for our school programs and operations. And if you're, if you're not aware, that levy contributes about 20% of our budget. So, again, I would just say thank you to our community who has always been so supportive of our levies and, and approving them on the elections. We're also considering as a school board, putting on a bond for capital projects, which would also be in February. And that money would help to rebuild some of our schools that need it. And also, equally as important, it would help us to add some additional classrooms to some of our schools because we now are able to offer full-day kindergarten, which is wonderful, and to have lower classroom sizes in first through third grade, which means we need some additional classrooms.
Okay. Ms. McMurray, same question.
You know, the local levy has, has over the past several years been the lifeblood of the district. When we didn't really know what was going to happen with the state, we weren't sure what money was going to come in and when, because they've done some interesting things about when we get payments. It's the support of the community through the local levy that has allowed us to maintain the programs at the levels that we have. And so, those levies are extremely important to us and as a district, as a board, we're, we're cognizant that it's taking money out of your pocket and that's a responsibility that we take seriously.
Thank you. Well, you can take a breather. That is the end of the questions. We are now going to go into closing statements. We've given you one minute for a closing statement and Ms. Phillips, we'll start with you. You have one minute for your closing statement.
Very good, thank you. Well, I believe that the education of our children is our community's greatest responsibility. And I look forward to representing you as I continue serving on the board to set district policy, engage our community, and help shape the leaders of tomorrow. Thank you.
Ms. McMurray?
You know, I live in Breyer and somebody might ask, well, what are you doing in Edmonds at a, at a meeting? Nobody, no other community has ever invited me to come and talk about my views, why I'm on the school board and, and my goals. Edmonds community is the only one that's ever done it. And so, I guess my closing statement is to say thank you very much. Thank you for being involved and interested in civics, not just on school board, but a variety of things. And the, the atmosphere and the commitment in this room is part of the reason that, that I sign up and, and on Tuesday nights head over to the district and work on the school board. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we can express our appreciation for the candidates.